Tonight, we have Harmony Gamazel, the Senior Planner at the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, and she's going to talk about greater sustainability. Welcome, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for the invitation. Again, it's nice to be here. Hello. Again, Harmony Gamazel, I'm a Land Use Planner for the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission in Lansing, which serves the Clinton, Eaton, and Ingham County area in mid-Michigan, including Meridian Township, holds a seat on our commission as well. And so, what I'm going to give you tonight is kind of a wrap-up of the outcomes from our three-year-long initiative that was funded by a HUD, Sustainable Communities grant. We have 3 million -- oh, I'm sorry, should I fix this? Sorry. Better? Okay. It was a three-year, $3 million initiative between Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, the Greater Lansing Housing Coalition, Michigan Energy Options, Meridian Charter Township, Leroy Harvey, to be exact, and the Mid-Michigan Environmental Action Council, and MSU. And so, we were able to complete with the help of residents and appointees and board members of Meridian Township, and all of the other local townships, cities, and villages in our region, we came up with nine different deliverables, all in the name of sustainability, which, when you define that under HUD grant, means the perfect projects that perfectly balance economic development with environmental protection and community building. If one of those are out of balance, the project will not be sustainable. And so, with that in mind, we created some planning deliverables that will be of much use to Meridian Township, and I'm going to walk you briefly through some of those. One deliverable, of course, being, if I can direct you to the screen, is the Mid-Michigan Program for Greater Sustainability website, which is midmichigansustainability.org. And this is the portal that we created to house all of the different activities and updates of everything that we have been doing over the past three years. And so, now it's in its complete form, and I'm using that tonight as kind of our framework because it just, it has everything on it that you would ever need to research sustainability in our region, if you needed planning tools, to that effect. And so, I'm just going to go right to the Projects and Timeline page, where it links, and I'm going to scroll down, the nine different areas, nine different project areas. The first one is, we completed a five-year Comprehensive Regional Fair and Affordable Housing Plan and an Affordable Housing Study. And I know you were host to Julie Powers last month, and so, she, I'm sure, gave you a nice rundown on what that plan was all about, and kind of what they're looking for from Meridian Township, as far as planning for inclusive housing that's affordable, and for all ages and abilities. Well, our region finally has a plan. It did not have a housing plan like that before this effort, and now that plan is on this website. It is a hefty PDF, but if you want to click on this link in front of you, you'll be able to read through that and see the recommendations for our local communities. So again, housing played a big part in this program because housing and urban development was the grand tour for the program, and so, we had to make sure that we touched on housing. Again, there's a link here, I'll direct you to the site, the Regional Affordable Housing Study. This is different because it's mainly data. This is a data-driven study where professors at MSU were able to collect the gaps in our housing, the needs for housing, as far as affordability. And so, it's a really great snapshot, very helpful to use if you're updating your master plan or other documents, you'd be able to pull housing data from this link. Next was a Community Reinvestment Fund, and I will pull that up right here. The Mid-Michigan Environmental Action Council gave away mini-grants over the three-year period of about $300,000 we were able to give to our local nonprofits to engage citizens into planning processes that normally, they were not involved in planning. So, we're talking about minorities, and veterans, and seniors, and super seniors, single heads of households, refugees, the LG -- I'm sorry, lesbian, gay -- LGBT communities. They were able to apply through a nonprofit to get these grants, and we were able to spend 10% of our 3 million grant in these mini-grants, which was wonderful. For an example, the Reach Art Studio applied for a grant, and so, teenage kids who were going to the art studio became a part of the Lansing city planning process, and they approached the city of Lansing with statues, and that they had made, structures they had made, they wanted to place in the city. And so, they had to go through the planning board process, and promote their work, and get the approvals, and through that, they learned about presentation skills, and what you wear to a presentation, and how to field questions, and things like that. So, it was really, that was just one example, and there were many mini-grants that were given out in the three-year span. And so, those efforts, I think, are, those impacts are going to be far-reaching. The third, fourth, we have the Energy Audit. So, Michigan Energy Options created an energy study of different building types along Michigan Avenue and Grand River Avenue, so 22-mile corridor between the Capitol Building and Weberville. They sampled building types and were able to do an energy use footprint analysis of these types. And so, this, again, is another study we had never had before, and I believe would be another useful asset for Meridian Township when doing your planning, to research the study and pull data from it. The Urban and Rural Service Management Area, that is a committee that I facilitate at Tri-County, and we promote urban service boundaries in the region, which has been a topic of your Planning Commission and Board of Trustees, and getting an urban service boundary adopted. So, there's a lot of research that goes on behind why you adopt an urban service boundary, where it's placed. We actually completed with the help of this grant a health impact analysis of our urban service boundary policy work that we do around the region. And we were able to outline the negative or positive health impacts that this sort of planning policy would have. And so, we now have a health impact assessment summary of that work. Greening Mid-Michigan, another team that I helped facilitate, and I'm sure you're familiar with it, we were able to create a new promotional video about our work, about greening Mid-Michigan, and our parks, and trails, and farms, and farmers' markets, and active living through trail use and biking. We have wonderful promotional videos that we created, that we've been using around the region to engage planning boards, and village and city councils, just to get them thinking about green infrastructure when they do their planning. And this is, Meridian Township's no stranger to that type of planning. But anyway, we were able to create a wonderful video that is at the greeningmidmichigan.org website. Let's see, this is something you're probably very familiar with, briefly touch on it. We were able to spend about 3/4 of a million dollars on the Michigan Avenue, Grand River Avenue corridor alone, in looking at the future of its design. And we picked that 22-mile corridor mainly because of the issue of a bus rapid transit that was probably, they're looking to actually move dirt on next year, that would have a bus line with its own lane between the Capitol Building in Lansing and Meridian Mall. That was kind of the Kickstarter for this corridor project, because what would a bus rapid transit have as far as an impact on the land uses up and down the corridor? We want it to be more transit-oriented, walkable, bikeable, connected to the neighborhoods. And so, through a charrette process, which I'm sure you're all involved in, we were able to complete a very impressive workbook with design strategies for the corridor. And I know that your Planning Commission and your Board of Trustees is aware of that corridor book, and we are looking for the communities along the corridor to adopt it and incorporate it into their own master planning. And so, that would kind of be the next step for Meridian Township. If you look on the screen there, there's a map of the corridor itself, and that's just an overview of it. But the design portfolio and the corridor design booklet go hand-in-hand, and can be very useful for the township with your planning. Also, we had the Complete Streets Effort. So, Michigan Fitness Foundation and Mid-Michigan Environmental Action Council came together, and they did a complete sidewalk audit of the city of Lansing. So, the city of Lansing Public Works Department now has on-the-ground data of the quality of all of their sidewalks. That was an incredible effort, and in fact, it supports their Complete Streets Ordinance, since they were one of the first Complete Streets Ordinances in the state, if not the first. This really supplemented that work. And also, we had some Safe Routes to Schools outreach occur. The Director of Safe Routes to Schools at Michigan Fitness Foundation was able to reach out to school districts along the corridor, and at least talk to their transportation directors about using the CADA bus system or other alternative ways to move kids around to field trips, and things like that, and for them to at least understand better the Safe Routes to School program. And finally, the online portal, which you see before you. So, at this point, the program has a lot of data, a lot of recommendations, a lot of planning tools for all of our communities to use, so we're really in the implementation phase now. It was a planning grant, now we have to start doing some investment and some adoption to get some of these programs rolling. And a lot of them are still ongoing, of course, they've just kind of mutated into different forms. Like, Greening Mid-Michigan is now working on another bus tour. We held bus tours for the region, where we took, we went 100 miles in one day, and we visited nine different sites around the region to see working farms. We visited working bugs, that was where we started. And then, we visited downtown development projects, we visited parks and trails. It was kind of a, well, we called it the ultimate Mid-Michigan bus tour, and so, we're going to hold one of those again. So, some of these teams are just, they're still here, we're just trying to implement our work now to the next phase, because that HUD funding has ended. It's just a different phase now, so. I also, there's a Sustainability Tools link, if you look on the screen, and this is, some of them are hands-on, interesting tools that you could have fun with and actually use as part of your planning process. I will start with the Sustainability Audit Tool. This was created by Michigan State University, and you can actually go through a quick checklist and check off to see how your community is doing as far as sustainability. And so, this is going to take, it looks like it doesn't want to open it, but, oh, good, it did. Again, it's kind of a, like it says, a readiness test for your community, how mobile is your community? I mean, it really is, I highly recommend that you poke around on this site and get to know the Sustainability Tool, Sustainability Audit Tool. There's a Water and Energy Use Quiz, there's a Health Impact Assessment Tool. So, this was inspired by Meridian's Health Impact Assessment Tool, and the Ingham County Health Department really spurred this along with their new Health in All program, where they would like public health to be incorporated into every policy decision made in our region. And we were able to create a mapping tool, online and free, GIS-based, but very easy to use, and it's very similar to Meridian's HIA, in that it has a series of questions that it asks you about each site development, and it will give you a report. It's not amazing to Meridian, because you've already invested time and money and staff into creating your own tool, but it is still, it is amazing, because now it is free and open to everyone else in the region. And we have local data layers for everyone to use, from Weberville to Charlotte to Clinton County, and so, we're very proud of this. You're able to log in and create an account, bring up base maps, create snapshots, it'll pull up data of waterways, and sidewalks, and caddostops, and things of that nature, wellhead areas. And so, a planner who normally would not have access to this type of very costly planning tool, it's now free for them to use in their site plan reviews. So, that was one of the real highlights, and that was, that was an interesting partnership, because the Pew Charitable Trusts actually funded most of that, and then HUD money supplemented staff time for it. So, thank you to Pew Charitable Trusts and Ingham County Health Department. Then, I won't click on all of these, but I'll just run you through them. There's a Green Home Survey, Health and Safety Practices Quiz, Highway Sustainability, so many, many interesting planning tools there for you to use. And Tri-County Regional Planning Commission maintains this portal now, this website, and so, we will be updating it with new calendar items and meeting dates as they come along that are related to sustainability, too. So, that's kind of where we are right now, we're looking for funding to keep certain things going, but moving ahead on others, but these planning tools are there for you. Any questions?
How are you promoting your website and the planning tools?
Well, it's basically me going around to boards and commissions, so that's kind of slow-going, but it works. Also, we have a comprehensive partner database, people who came to all of the meetings and workshops related to all of these projects, hundreds of people. We have their emails and contact information, and so, we will do updates time and again about MMPGS to keep them engaged, because they were interested in these projects to begin with, so that's another way. And then, also, it's on our, there's a link to it on our Tri-County page, so people can get to it there. We would like local communities to have links to it on their pages. I believe it's on the Meridian Township page already, I'd have to check that. And then, of course, we promote these different items through our Tri-County Facebook page, but the more that folks like you, boards like you, the partnerships can promote this, the better, too, because it really is, these are your tools, too, it's not just Tri-County's. So, that's kind of the status on how we promote it, social capital, as it were.
What's the status of the Rapid Bus in the Corridor Concept or Project? Where's that at?
I don't have a full, in-depth knowledge of it, but I do know a couple things. I know that CADA is now raising money on the private sector side and public sector, looking to raise the budget that it needs to build, but that essentially, I have heard in our office, late 2016 is when they would start moving dirt on that project. So, it's quite fast.
There was a comment last night at the Township Board meeting from trustee Veenster that suggested that the cost estimate on that project had come down considerably recently, and I take it that's part of what's causing it to move forward. I didn't hear details of what, why that cost estimate had changed, but...
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
That's what I heard.
Had come down in the sense...
Going to be much more affordable than a prior estimate.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you just meant it had arrived, or it actually had been lowered.
No, no, if the estimate, the estimate is lower than it had been previous.
Something went down, I'll have to look into that. And then, you just jogged my memory, that another, something that this commission would be very interested in, we did some biological surveys along the corridor as part of the environmental assessment that is required by the federal government to build like this. Michigan Natural Features Inventory went out, they had a team of biologists, and they tried to get access to five different conservation hubs that Greening Mid-Michigan identified as being critical, just along the corridor. And so, we have real, on-the-ground data of the species that were found there. You know, one site was near Park Lake and Grand River. Another site was the Well Harris Nature Center area, and a little bit north of there. Another site was at Hagadorn and Grand River, so it's on the MSU campus along the river there. And that site in particular, very rare and endangered species on it, and MNFI was very surprised. And that's that fenced-off wooded area, nobody really goes into, I think there's one pathway through it. So, that is some data I can share, if you want to see the report. That's an outcome of both the MMPGS and CADA's BRT funding. And that's the work that Greening Mid-Michigan really wants to get into. Now, with our Greening Mid-Michigan maps, our conservation maps we created a few years ago, we have identified hubs of critical habitat around the region, but they've never been ground-truthed. We've never had biologists go out and tell us what's really there, and it's quite expensive, but if we do it piece by piece, we'll, we'll get it done over time, but that's some good stuff going on.
There's a term you were using, a term, urban, I think it's policy boundaries, or something like...
Urban service boundary?
Yes, sorry. I don't know what that means, and I'm curious if you could explain that.
Yeah, in a nutshell, an urban service boundary is a planning tool, it's a policy that a local government can adopt in order to proactively plan for where they want future water and sewer service to go and not go. In essence, it can be called a boundary, it can also be called an urban service management area, which I think is what Meridian ended up calling it, because it's an identified area for future growth, where it makes the most logical sense for growth to go, versus where do you not want it to go because of floodplains, and habitat, and farmland, and so, it's a planning tool. Delhuy Township has one, it helps, it delineates, their boundary delineates the more suburban urban area of Holt, with the prime farmland on the south side of their township. Delta Township adopted one, just in its last master plan review update. Williamstown Township has one, and it has more to do with the city, the city's water and sewer service. So, they're working, they're using their urban service boundary policy to start a dialogue with the city, and where, if the city ever wants to grow or annex, they now can start a dialogue and say, well, this is where we've planned for future growth, this is where we don't want it. Other communities have urban service boundaries or urban service management areas, but they take different forms, like it could be zoning, it could be rural zoning could be a boundary. You see what I mean? Because you wouldn't have subdivisions coming in there, or strip malls. So, we're seeing more and more of it around the Greater Lansing area. The city of Charlotte has an urban service boundary, where they've partnered with the two townships on either side of the city to create an area where they would, all three of them want to see development go in the future. And if there is any new development that moves into those areas, they will share the tax base between the three of them, and put it into a pot of money for parks and recreation funding. Let's see, I think that's pretty much it for urban service boundaries in our region. And Meridian Township had one in the 90s, and it was rescinded, and now I think it's being proposed again, but the location is under discussion. The Board wants it one way, and the Planning Commission wants it the other way, so there needs to be a little discussion about that, so is that helpful?
Yeah, that helps, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, very valuable tool, very valuable.
So, I've got two questions for you. First, there was another comment from Township Board about how the Township, Meridian Township kind of ranked, and I'm not sure if it was based on the use of a tool that you were talking about, the Audit Tool, or something else, and that particular trustee was saying that there was even more room for improvement in the Township's sustainability score, as it were, than he had previously recognized, and I wonder if you could speak to that?
Just generically, I could speak to it, there's always room for improvement, but I would say that Meridian Township, with your Green Space Plan, is that the exact name of it? With your Bike and Ped Plan, you promote low-impact development at all of your sites, or at least you have regulations promoting low-impact development. The more regulatory items you have adopted, the more likely you are to be sustainable with the site plans that come through, and are, you know, the developments. So, I would say Meridian is, I would say, leading the way at the top of the other governments in our region, for sure, as far as the things you've adopted and are using. The fact that you have an environmental commission speaks loudly to your efforts towards sustainability. So, it's little things like that that actually can build up and create a more strong, sustainable community, so I think you are ahead of the curve on that, for sure. Yeah, we don't have exact rankings, but that would be interesting, to do rankings of our communities, and I like that idea.
Well, I guess that's my second question. There is a Green Space Plan, and we spent some time recently thinking about how much has been accomplished in the 10 years since it was adopted, and how its recommendations might be more fully implemented. And I guess the same question arises with the corridor study. So, quite a bit of effort, a lot of township participation in those discussions, and a lot of vision that's gone on. But since that study was completed, several projects have come forward for approval in the corridor, including, you know, within a couple of miles of us right here. And as it stands, those projects are all being considered under existing ordinances. So, then the question arises, as you mentioned, how to implement. How do we get from the vision of a corridor that we want to see, to, how do we get to that vision if what we have is a set of ordinances that allow, by right, developments that don't fit that vision?
So, time is of the essence, then, to adopt. If you take a look at the corridor piece on the website, you'll, you will be able to call up the portfolio, the Corridor Design Portfolio. And in that, that was created by MSU, and in that are hundreds of recommendations on the zoning language to adopt to make certain scenarios happen. It's all about sustainability, again, in land use. And so, pulling from that portfolio, and it's meant to just be copied and pasted, copied and stolen, it's meant for everyone to use and pull from it. You can research it by topic, pull out zoning language, pull out urban form recommendations as far as language for design, get those amended into your zoning regulations, and get language amended into your master plan that promote those different elements. So, it's more than just adopting and using the corridor plan itself, that is a key step for your township, but also, looking at the portfolio and pulling out language and regulations that can really help you create site plans that are appealing and sustainable. So, you know, time is of the essence. I know Mark Kieselbach is involved in this process, Rick, Peter, Gail, everyone is aware of it, of course, at the staff level, and so, I think it's just time to visit the Township Board and Planning Commissions, and get their sense of how, if they would like to adopt these documents.
But, so essentially, the implementation of that plan, working towards that vision is a, is a matter of amending the ordinances, perhaps using the language in the portfolio?
Mm-hmm. And I'm sure, you know, Rick can speak to it better than I can, but you probably have language in your master plan and zoning regulations that already address most of this, but there are areas that can be strengthened. Because, again, when you're doing the Sustainability Checklist, you're very strong on the environmental side, but then you have to make sure your economic development side is strong, so that's your corridor development area. And then also, the community building part of it, where how do you engage marginalized populations into your planning? Those are the two other aspects of sustainability that maybe Meridian may not have been at the top, I'm not sure. You definitely have, you know, your DDA and things like that, but...
Yeah, and we're trying to promote that conversation with the DDA, the Economic Development Commission, for that purpose. Could you have some comments, Rick? Yeah, I was just reflecting that some of the plans that I've seen come to the Planning Commission for approval recently are pretty traditional, parking in the front, business in the back, drive-throughs, a lot of pavement, very car-oriented, site plans that call for removing trees so that people driving at 45 miles an hour can see a sign on the front of a store. And that's, you know, pretty much what, the opposite of what I saw in, in the visioning for the corridor. So, while there may be language in our current ordinances that enables some flexibility, it seems like what we... it seems like what we currently have is ending up bringing site plans that bring us more of what we've got. So it, in some ways, feels like a relatively major overhaul is required, at least for certain parts of the township, if we're ever gonna get to that, that sort of vision. I don't know.
And that kind of thought is what hopefully we'll see at the board level, and even the, the DDA, I should probably visit with the DDA. So it just takes steps.
Well, that's what I was sort of wondering about, was just sort of, you know, what have you had in terms of response, in terms of people saying, wow, I really want to jump on this and implement the many wonderful ideas that you've got built in here?
From Meridian?
Yeah, from, whether it's, you know, citizen groups, other, other bodies like this, or, yeah.
Generally, everyone was very positive when Tri-County adopted the Corridor Design Plan. It was a huge event at the Hannah Center, and there was a lot of momentum, and everyone returned back, you know, we had really good turnout, and the Lansing Planning Board is very positive, and hopefully they will adopt it this year. East Lansing, East Lansing completed its own environmental assessment because of the way the bus rapid transit was going to impact their, you know, just the feel of how the roadway is through East Lansing with the boulevards, the trees, the storefronts. And so they're kind of a separate aspect of the corridor plan, they're gonna take a little more time. But they were involved in its creation and were very positive about it. And then, community groups like the Allen Neighborhood Center area were very positive about it, because a lot of the corridor book spends time on the Sparrow area and making Sparrow more neighborhood-friendly and less austere. And so, I mean, feedback in general is really positive. I haven't heard any political kickback or political pushback about it. So it's just a matter of Tri-County being able to take this to the different communities and actually ask for the formal adoption, and that just takes a lot of time. But that's what we foresee in the next year or two is happening.
Do you, are there avenues by which you make this, you know, you bring this to businesses, for instance, who might also, you know, advocate for? I'm just, I'm just concerned that you've got this beautiful set of plans, and how do you, how do you then build momentum?
Exactly. Well, we held a series of special meetings with the owners of the mall, Meyer, MSU, Sparrow, you know, all these key areas, these, these non-governmental entities, really. And they helped create the plan as well, and some of the designs. And so with that relationship that Tri-County has, we need to build on that. And when the investment comes along, say at the mall, or at the Meyer area, those entities need to be ready to make those changes in their sites, their site areas, so...
So they've not only, you've not only met with them, but they've made commitments to coordinate with, or at least to, for instance, you can imagine Meridian Mall needing to make its parking lots a little bit less desert-like, if, you know, if, if they're gonna be compatible with the rest of the vision, just as an example.
We don't have any formal commitments with that private sector on this, but we do have a relationship and a dialogue, which is very valuable. And is really, as much as we could expect at this point in time with having a brand-new plan that they helped create, just having that relationship is, is helpful right now. And then, once the BRT project starts to move, and, you know, where is the BRT going to, where are people going to be able to park to get on the BRT at the Meridian Meyer area? That's where the private sector discussion begins again, when they see money being invested in the actual BRT. What are the, then they're gonna realize the impacts to their site, and then that dialogue will begin again. It's not a perfect answer to that, but it's just the reality. Yeah, it's a path.
You had mentioned about getting more people involved in the planning process, and you gave us the one example. I wonder, did any of that happen in Meridian Township that you're aware of? Or maybe Rick has some, I mean, were there...
The mini-grants?
Well, were, yeah. Was there any new, new participants in the Township's planning process because of the project?
Oh, I'm trying to...
There was a lot of participation.
Yeah.
Dozens and dozens of people at the meetings. I don't know what you mean by new participants.
We had kids working on the corridor project. We invited middle schoolers from Alchemist Schools to work on that plan. That was an incredible event. So in that way, yes, we did have the under-18 crowd drawing up designs for the Meridian area, and those are incorporated in the booklet. You'll be able to see that online. The mini-grants, I wonder if, what nonprofits from Meridian? Here's a list on the screen of the non, of the nonprofits that were able to gain the mini-grants. Can you see that? I'm looking at, and these would have all been engaging people in planning processes that never would have otherwise. So I'm trying to look for Meridian areas, Friends of Park Lake, Fenner Conservancy. And so basically, these nonprofits would hold strategic planning workshops and make sure that the refugee population was there, or that children were invited, or seniors, or Arts Council of Greater Lansing. I don't see anything particularly Meridian-centric on here. Michigan Recycling Coalition.
The example of the older schools is a good one, though?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just one way we did engage.
Any other questions for, for me?
Comments? Great, well, thank you very much for coming and explaining this plan.
Thank you. Thanks, Rick. Thank you very much.